Hey Doug, can you hear me and see me okay? Hey Kevin, just doing a quick sound check, can you hear me alright? Poor Doug.
I can hear you just fine Rob, thanks.
Thank you.
You feeling better than the last meeting you were at?
Uh. A little bit, I've been able to work more, but I still, if I push myself too hard, I crash and it happened over the weekend.
I get it, I often have the same thing. Alright, I'm just going to go on the side and listen to you gentlemen entertain me and women entertain me tonight, and I can't wait for the chicken law.
We are here for your entertainment Doug.
Hello?
Hey Kevin, hear you loud and clear.
Hello, hi Kevin.
And Marie, what screen do you see right now? Do you see a local law filing or do you see a presentation saying that you're at the meeting? Can't hear you Marie, I think you're muted.
I see the Village of Huzick Falls regular meeting screen.
Awesome, thank you. I'll be back in a moment.
Okay. Hello?
Hi Deb.
Hi, is that too loud? Good, how are you?
Fine. No, I can hear you.
Okay.
Did you get your paperwork figured out yet?
I found it.
Oh good, alright.
That's a start.
Very good. Thought I saw Kevin, I don't know where he went.
I'm gonna go turn the light on.
There you go. Hi Kev.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello.
Mayor? Chief Ash, I'm in.
Hi.
It's you, we're just about getting started, I'm getting the Facebook Live video up and running and then I think we'll be off to the races.
Alrighty.
Well, it says we're being streamed live, but I don't have any evidence of that yet. Yes, we are, we are live. Just informally, I want to make sure we have all the trustees here that we're supposed to have here, I see Deb, I see Bobby, I see Kevin, I see Vanessa, I see Andy, I see Emily, and I think I see Craig.
You do?
The top of Craig's head, looks fantastic, alright.
That's why I keep my camera off.
Better the top of your head than the top of mine, alright. We're gonna, we're gonna get this meeting started now. So I'm gonna officially call the meeting into order at 6:02 PM. Please rise with, to say the pledge of allegiance, as a reminder, you can mute, turn off your video when we do this, and I will stand right now and say the pledge, give you a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible, liberty, and justice.
This is strong.
Take a moment of silence as we think about those who have gone before us. Thank you very much. Let us resume. Okay, first roll call please Marie.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Alter.
Here.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee Marpy.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Pine.
Here.
And Attorney Gilchrist. All present?
Thank you very much, we have some great beeping in the background there. Okay, a couple of quick things as we review online etiquette. When not speaking, please remember to mute your audio, a lot of the programs allow you to have an option where you hold spacebar down only when you talk, that's fine. You're encouraged to use headphones so that there's no feedback between the speakers and the headphones. And if two more of you are watching the meeting in the same room, make sure to have only one person's audio on. Also to note, on the top of each page, I have a little meeting map so that you know where we are in each meeting, just helping the presentation going along. Alright. First, on the agenda, I am looking for a motion to open public hearing for local law number two, a local law establishing rules and regulations for the use of municipal parking lots in the Village of Huzick Falls.
Motion.
I saw Vanessa and heard Vanessa, I'll take that in a second.
Second.
Thank you Deb, appreciate that. Okay, let me switch the share to this local law. I'm actually gonna switch to our agenda and I think switch that. Do you guys see the local law filing on the screen right now? Alright, great. So this local law is on our villageofhuzickfalls.com website as well, as I said before, this is a local law for the use of municipal parking lots in the Village of Huzick Falls. This was officially brought in and introduced last meeting, so for the public hearing, anyone may, at all may speak, ask questions, give thoughts on this law. All we ask is that when you share, you introduce yourself with your first and last name and your address, street address. Can I get an idea of people who would like to speak on this topic? If you are interested, please unmute yourself and speak up. Alright, hearing none, we're gonna leave the public hearing open. Trustees, are there any questions you wanted to ask? Ourselves, Andy, anything?
I noticed in Neil's departmental reports that he had a comment about this, and I haven't gone back and looked at the law and Neil's comments to figure out whether the law needs editing to address Neil's concerns, I mean, it sounded like he had a legitimate concern about making winter plowing easier.
Right, he wanted on the perimeter only. And I didn't, I was looking at this law, I don't know if I see it anywhere on there, is it on there Rob that you're aware of?
I'm looking for Neil's comments.
Then the departmental report for the highway.
Right.
Is it regarding park? Parking?
The last thing in his, the last thing in this section, there's a paragraph.
Okay. So Andy, his, his comment in his report, I think all, that one correctly, I think all overnight parking?
No. He also mentioned about having parking only on the perimeter of the parking lot during snow emergencies.
Okay.
Which I think is gonna be pretty hard to pull off as far as a parking lot goes.
Overnight parking shouldn't be allowed.
Right, and in the, in the text of the current law dealing with snow emergencies, the current text is that no parking in the municipal lot during a declared snow emergency to allow for the snow removal.
So overnight and long-term parking is what's in the legal part.
Yeah, this is at section 3H. No person shall park a vehicle in a municipal parking lot during any period of time declared by the village to be a snow emergency. Furthermore, cars parked in municipal parking lots following any snow event must be moved to allow for snow parking, or for snow plowing. So during a declared snow emergency, all the cars, all the vehicles need to be removed to allow the snow removal, all other snow events, they just need to be moved, not out, they just need to be available to be moved within the lot to allow for snow plowing. That's what the current language provides for.
Yeah, currently in the past, we've had snow events and the cars have sat there for weeks at a time, that's one of the things that we deem to enforce.
And when reading this as a whole, if for some reason there's a car in a municipal lot after a snowstorm and it is not moved, if it's a snow emergency, or removed if it's a snow emergency, or at least moved during another snow event, it could be deemed a violation of the law and the car could be ticketed or towed, that's in the enforcement provision. So this has been set up so that if a vehicle is found to be in violation, it can be towed at the owner's expense and the owner will be liable for towing expense and any storage fees. So I think read together, that's how, how the law's been set up. Kevin, did you read that the same?
I did.
And I think that Neil's suggestion was a little bit lighter of what we have in a law, and maybe that's something we can move to, but I think that the creation, and again Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but then the creation of this law was to sort of make things more clear, not just in enforcement, but in what exactly is and isn't allowed. And maybe perhaps if we end up passing this law and decide later to take Neil's suggestion, we can go back and amend it.
Yeah, but I don't know how you would outline that as far as verbiage on a sign saying you can only park on the outside perimeter of this parking lot, how are people, people might interpret it in different ways and I think just not allowed to park there after the snow emergency is just better to give them the word that they've gotta move their cars so they can perform general snow maintenance.
I agree with that, I think that the verbiage that's in there is sufficient, that covers, says they have to move in case of a snow emergency, if they don't, we have to ticket them or get them towed, I think that's the, we just need to make sure we enforce it, that's all.
And in all due respect to Neil's point there, but I think it would make it very difficult, the decision will fall upon the police whether it's parked on the outside or not, I think the way it's written right now is, is what, the way it's gonna be easier for us to enforce without any questions.
Neil's other point was that a car has been parking in, it's called Kennedy Lane, which goes from the Maharfenner home and actually ends up outside of John Street, and it is a, as far as I know, still a village street, although it's been blocked off. Andy, can you address that, or Bob maybe can address it, whether he legally can park there on a regular basis?
Anybody really, can anybody park there on a regular basis, or is that supposed to be no parking whatsoever?
Well, let me jump in on this, in, in general, if it's a village, street, village-owned and maintained street, but there is no local law prohibiting parking or regulating parking, then a vehicle could park there. That's why the board in the past has identified certain streets and either limited parking or prohibited parking. And I think that, once the municipal lots were addressed through this proposed local law, I think the next order of business that the board wanted to address was looking at, right now, what are the local laws concerning parking restrictions on village streets, organizing that and determining what would be the best comprehensive approach to parking on village streets, I think that probably would be the next order of business for parking regulation in the village.
Yeah, this particular street has been almost turned into a pedestrian street, and there actually is no place to park on that street. There's no place, you could, even if you had a car on there, there's no place to go otherwise, so it kind of blocks the entire street.
It's also a little parking lot back there for a couple of buildings that face Main Street, and it makes it really hard for those people to back in and out.
When it's blocked, you mean?
Yes.
Alright, anyone else on the board or listening in want to comment on, ask questions about this proposed local law? Now is the time?
The, the only thing I want to reiterate what Kevin said, how come, how do we, can we address that, because Neil claims in his report that it's a pedestrian walkway. It's not considered a a path or pedestrian walkway.
I think we would have to check in with Andy and what's on the books to see what the exact definition of that spot is.
That street is, okay.
Right, i- in general, what, what you need to do is identify if that's on the road inventory as a public street. If it's not, there's procedures that, that the board can go through to determine that it's no longer needed as a public highway, but maintain ownership and create, whether it's a pedestrian thoroughfare or what have you. But we can look at that, if, if it's on the road inventory or it's included within the inventory for state aid for the CHIPS money, well then, we'll have to review that and make sure factually what's going on with it, and then we can address it.
Okay.
Andy, I had a question from someone online watching, is there any accompanying impact statements for this law?
Well, let's first define, if, if that is under SEACER, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, we looked at that and I believe this is a type 2 action under SEACER. So there has not been any environmental assessment form prepared. Secondly, in terms of any other impact, whether it be financial impact assessment, I'm not aware that the village has prepared any. But at least for SEACER purposes, we did look at this and it was our opinion that this is a type 2 action.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak up on this? So you don't have to speak up now, we're gonna leave the public hearing open for probably another 20 minutes or so, we have to leave it open for 30 minutes. Alright, hearing none, I'm gonna proceed on with the next part of the meeting, but I will come back here in case someone has any additional questions, or I see any additional questions posted online. So just as a reminder, we'll leave it open for additional 30 minutes. Okay, we have a load of announcements, which is actually a good thing, I think, this, this meeting. We have 10 new blue garbage cans that have been placed throughout the village, I want to thank the LDC for fully financing these garbage cans, as well as the TPW employees who handled the installation, I've received a lot of compliments, I've seen a lot of positive things online about these garbage cans. I feel like a couple trustees were involved in this process too, Kevin maybe one, maybe Bobby, I can't remember, but for anyone involved, thank you very much, I know it's making a difference and people are enjoying it. Also, want to thank New York State Department of Transportation for taking care of Route 22 Bridge graffiti, that was something we talked about last meeting. The Festival of Trees, with the Adopt a Tree program, the trees are gonna be distributed on November 20th, please decorate by Thanksgiving, which is November 26th, and that will be in time for a smaller or bridge version of what normally happens each year, obviously in light of COVID. They're gonna do a drive-through Santa and a small tree lighting ceremony, it's not singing, it's not a large crowd, it's just gonna sort of happen. There's more details to be worked out, they're waiting to see how many fire trucks they have to figure out exactly what area they're going to be doing the drive-through Santa, little parade-ish type situation. Marie, do you have any other details than what I'm stammering through, or is that pretty much it at this point?
No, you've got it pretty good, it's gonna be at 5 o'clock on Friday night.
Oh, I missed that, thank you, 5 o'clock Friday night. Also, Small Business Saturday is November 28th, so please get out there, please support our local businesses, they do great stuff for our community. The Haka Holiday Food and Fun Drive is going on, they're shooting to raise $6,000 to help provide over 400 holiday food boxes to those in need in our community. Marie, if people want to contribute to that, what's their options to do that, how do they do that?
There are several places they can leave off food in the village, aside from the food pantry down lower John Street. I believe Deb's shop, Small Song is one, also Huzick Provisions is another, where they can drop off food or send donations to Haka.
Great. Thank you very much, and also Toys for, yeah Deb.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, because when Diane Hosterman buys food from the Regional Food Bank, she can get a lot more for her money than we can at the grocery store. So actually, food is totally acceptable and welcome, but money goes farther.
Okay, thank you Deb, thank you, very good point. Toys for Tots will be collecting donations of presence, as we normally do, will be collecting them in the lobby of the municipal building, if you are concerned about leaving them in the lobby, you can always knock on the police window, I know Chief, we've done that in the past before, and reminder, please drop them off as unwrapped gifts, Chief, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yes, I've been in conversation with Toys for Tots, and we've come to an agreement that the, the toys that are gonna be coming here are gonna remain in the village, so even though Toys for Tots are working with us on it, those toys, so last year, we, we had a lot of requests from village residents and town residents. So I met with them and we've agreed that it would be better for them to stay here in the village, so all these toys that are gonna be delivered will be staying and be given to families within the village and the town of Huzick.
Great. Thank you Chief. And finally, we are still looking for two additional members for the zoning board, if you are interested, please contact the village office. And they will get you plugged in. Alright, we have two presentations, the first one is from Sarah of Unity House, Sarah, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Great, hi Sarah, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, can you pronounce your last name so I don't butcher it?
McGockney.
Oh, I was not going to get that right, alright, thank you Sarah. Sarah, the floor is yours, please tell us what you do, tell us about Unity House and what, what our possibilities are here.
Yeah, this is really exciting, I work at Unity House of Troy, I'm, I work at the DV program specifically, but we're a large organization with many different programs, serving many different people. So we really look to serve, I serve primarily victims of domestic violence, but really all people living in poverty, living with mental health, substance abuse, HIV/AIDS, we're really serving all these unique underserved populations. And we, we offer a ton of services through Unity House, which is why I originally got in touch with Chief Ash, because I was like, how can we, you know, how can we collaborate, I really want to help, and I feel so, I feel like we, you know, we have a food pantry, we have therapists that are free of charge, all our services are free, they're confidential. We offer case management, we offer housing stipends, we help people with first months for insecurity. I can meet with somebody and all I need is a laptop and I can help them get an order of protection, they don't have to go to Family Core, I can do that all remotely. We offer, you know, housing, we offer housing assistance, we offer employment assistance, education. The food pantry, the meals are huge. We have a massive, our holidays are coming up, we have massive holiday programs, we try to get everybody like a Thanksgiving meal. like a Thanksgiving meal and get, and then we try to get all the kids like adopted for Christmas, so we can get them all gifts for the holidays. Um we just have such a wide variety of services that we offer. We try to help victims with like court accompaniments and filing reports and just any resources we can provide. We're a nonprofit. Um just, and again, we do have a lot of resources. So my biggest hurdle was always that like we're located in the city of Troy, which can be kind of scary for people coming from rural Rensselaer County. It can be intimidating and transportation can be a huge issue. So we have, you know, an abundance of funding for transportation and all those different things. And we have an on-call system where we can provide just like 24-hour assistance. So if anybody calls us at any time of the day or night, I can send someone to a call to help somebody to get through safety planning. We have a 24-hour hotline. Um we also have a shelter, a large shelter that houses victims of domestic violence, and we can also have, we also have homeless shelters. Um then coming out of those shelters, we have a ton of different housing programs to try to make sure people are stably housed and safely housed. So we have this this huge amount of services, and I could go on and on. We have so many more that, you know, we help with CPS, we help with DSS, we help with all of those things, really helping people kind of be self-sustainable and um overcome barriers. But, you know, we can help people get medication. We have relationships with different pharmacies, all different stuff, all of our services, again, free of charge, confidential. But my barrier has always, being somebody who's from rural Rensselaer County, my barrier is always what, you know, we're just not serving them effectively. We're not serving the population living in rural Rensselaer County effectively. And I've just been for years trying to figure out, how do we do that? How do we do that? And I really think, after talking to Chief Ash, who was saying, you know, we we need resources, I can provide all of those resources, and I have staff who can work anywhere. They're all working remotely right now. They can work anywhere. They have laptops, um and they can go wherever, you know, and we can fill their gas and everything else. So we have vehicles, we have laptops, they're pretty, pretty movable. So I would love if we could just station somebody somewhere in Huzick Falls to serve all of those people and let them set them up with like maybe some office hours and let people come in and out. They could bring like food pantry items. They can really do it all. Um they can meet with people, they can just have open office hours, they can be referral. But uh that's kind of what we were talking about, and I really think that's the best way to get to um the population of people living worldly, because like I said, transportation is a huge issue. It's a huge barrier. And then the other side of that is like, it's it's not comfortable. It's not comfortable leaving Huzick Falls and going to like downtown Troy. That's not something that feels familiar or safe or comfortable. It can be kind of scary and intimidating. So um I don't know if anyone has any questions about anything or any thoughts.
Sarah, this is Chief Ash. And I'm I'm excited about this because you and I've had this conversation, and I know you asked me to come to Troy for a meeting, and I expressed to you about our coming down there, but our needs, you know, are a little bit different than the other areas down there. So there's two things here. Um if if we do, you need office space up here, correct?
Yes, I if I can get office space, I can put staff in it for whatever hours we think would be beneficial. So whether it be somebody there from like nine to five, or somebody there from two to 10, or two different days a week, I'm really flexible. I can put staff anywhere.
And this this office space up here would be open to outside the village and the town as well, right? So if someone in Pittsburgh, it would be easier for them to come here to to seek some assistance from Unity House?
Absolutely. So our services are open to everybody, from every county, anyone, anyone who needs help, we're gonna help them. Like I, I'll help anybody. They don't have to be a victim of domestic violence. They don't have to be anything. They could just come in and say like, I need a a box of pasta, and I'm like willing to help everybody. So um and all my staff are the same way. So yeah, the services would be absolutely open to anyone and free.
Um then what kind of office space would you need?
I really think they would just need like space enough for like maybe them and one person to meet with them. Like it doesn't have to be a big space. Um and just wifi, power in a bathroom, that'd be like real basic. They have all their own stuff. They have, they probably don't even need wifi, to be honest with you, because they can set up hotspots on their cell phones. So um they have all their own office equipment and everything.
There's space.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chief Ash.
That's all right. Go ahead.
The the Armory may have some space. Um I think that we, they can't do it for free free, but a small fee for, you know, to offset energy costs or something like that. But I think there is space in the Armory where you could set up, and we'd be happy to do that there.
I I've had conversation about the Armory, and I know that that is, that is a spot in in that they're talking about. But Sarah, how secure does this office have to be as well?
Um some security would be good, like at least a closed door. Um so that the conversations could be private. We can, um we we do a lot of safety planning and we utilize, you know, we our, my staff are smart. They think these things through. So I'm not super worried about it, because we want to make sure we're open enough to serve everybody, but definitely like a closed door, like fairly secure. So we can keep things confidential, particularly for like victims who are coming forward, looking for help. We want to keep it confident. We want to be able to keep it confidential.
Okay. I I have my, my, I think I, this is gonna be great. I think it's gonna be a great resource for the village, the town, the other side of the mountain per se, as well as the police department, because at two o'clock in the morning, when we're dealing with with a domestic violence uh issue here, we were, we were kind of stuck sometimes as to where we're gonna turn to for assistance. You also work with the mental health as well?
Yes, we already work with mental health a little bit. Um they sit on one of our uh collaborations, so they refer um victims to us. Eric Katz does that. And we, so we have a little bit, we have a relationship with them as well. So we can definitely, you know, share the our resources with mental health, and they can, we we can go back and forth as far as that, as far as resources. We have a lot of resources, and I just want to get them to rural Rensselaer County.
I'm excited. I think we should be able to accommodate this in one way or another.
Yeah, I would love it. I'm really flexible. Um I'm really flexible where it is. You know, we're we're pretty open and we're, we can go to unique places. We can go to church, we can go kind of wherever. Just I think it would be ideal to have somebody like stationed somewhere for a couple hours each week, maybe a day or maybe two days, just so that people knew they could come and it's consistent.
Okay.
Sarah, if you want to contact me, I can um arrange for you to see what's available at the Armory.
Okay.
Right in the middle of downtown.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, you can do it through the village, or I can give you my number.
Yeah, I can take your number if you want to chat it to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sarah, I, I'm sorry, Bobby, you you got, you guys go, then I'll go to the end.
I just didn't, now, if if this program, we we bring it up here, and we see it warrants more than just one room that that you're staying with a closed door. Now, would, is there thoughts of any expansion if we if we warrant, if it warrants it, would we have to find another building for you, or?
So that's, I mean, there, I'm always able to send staff more than one, one day a week, two days a week. I can send them five days a week if I had to. Um and then the other thing that this opens up is that if we're stationed there for some time a week or something like that, um it really opens the door for like applying for grants for like a larger space if there's a need for it.
Okay.
Okay, so Sarah, you want my number?
Yes.
Are you okay to give that over the uh live stream, Deb? We can always get it to her later through Chief, if you don't want everyone to have your number, which I would, you know, recommend, or live on Facebook.
Doesn't matter, because it's the same number as my shop number.
Oh, okay, then, go for it.
On the bottom, you can hit chat, and you can just type her your number to her.
Thank you, Vanessa.
I I just had one quick question. Um so the office space, you know, for it to be most useful, would it make sense that it was accessible um possibly in the hours where the chief might need support for something? You know, I'm thinking, it's probably easy to find the space nine to five, you know, but maybe a a place to use when when somebody needs help, you know, at 10 or 11 at night. Would that be more helpful?
Yeah, I mean, that that would be great. Um we can, we can definitely respond and like go to an office space with somebody if we have to get them from a situation and bring them into an office, just to talk to them, come up with a plan, or get them to a shelter or somewhere they need to go. So something that would be accessible in the off-hours would be great.
Well, I think the good thing here is that um we do have the police department for, that we could, we could house a person here until you get here. So, I mean, off-hours, I think we're gonna be okay. My my thoughts are is during these hours when you're in operation, um we we get to a nice place and a comfortable place. So um there's a lot of logistics things that we can work out as this thing starts moving along.
Yeah, and that's absolutely true. So any of our staff can go to the police station to meet with somebody off-hours, that we do that um in Troy all the time. They just go down to the police station and sit down and meet with them and um sort stuff out if they need a minute.
Sarah, what would you need the the village board to do?
I really think I just need a location, like it's just an office space, and I can, I can kind of make every, I can take everything else from there, because I can set them up. I mean, wifi would be nice, but but if it doesn't have it, I can set them up with like a hotspot and a laptop, and they can just go. So we're um because we sent all our staff to work from home, they're really, they're really good at moving and going and working remotely other places. So I really think I would just need a space. Um and then we can try to just get the word out. I don't know if we would want to do that through like word of mouth, or I can put, like draw up some like pamphlets or flyers or something with like the location on it and that right there, and we can try to get that out there too.
All right. I'll, I'm sure I'll be communicating back and forth here at some point, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ash.
Sarah, this is um, I have been long-thinking of ways that we could do exactly what you guys do. Um you know, we see the police reports. We know that there's a lot of domestic calls. We know uh we have rising addiction issues in uh in this county, in this area. Um and I know being plugged into my own church, but communicating with other, you know, church bodies, this is the kind of thing that I think if we got the right entities behind it, um we would be able to organize this and really go after this and see if we could find a a way to provide you guys um a permanent place um that you don't have to pay for. Because uh I think that, and I think what I want to do is I want to reach out to some local church leaders here and maybe some local municipalities, um and see if they would consider uh funding so that we could find a place. Because I think that um knowing the church community here, um this fills so many gaps and supports so many things that we, as a government entity, see the need for, but don't actually really have the power or the funding behind uh hitting uh these issues.
Yeah, that would be, that would be ideal, like just an office space. Um we didn't have to, we don't really have funding to pay for it, an office space, yeah, funding for people to help them, you know. So our funding is kind of tied to grants, that's very specific. But I would be happy to like staff that. I have a variety of different programs. I could send a couple different staff who do different thing um to do that, and we would be more happy to do that. That would be ideal. So certainly partnering with a faith-based organization is really great for um particularly for getting to domestic violence victims, because a lot of victims will go to their faith leaders, their churches, different things, with seeking help, you know. And um we can really provide those extensive services.
Yeah, and if if a lot of the faith-based organizations here know that you guys exist and know what you offer, um that can be another tool to helping people recover from whatever's going on.
Yes, absolutely. And a way to kind of get the word out, you know, and it'd be like a safe space. Like if they know that their their faith-based organizations can trust us, that maybe trust us a little bit more. So I love that idea.
All right. Any other questions from trustees or anyone else?
No, I just wanted to say that Hockham is a place to start too. They have a lot of different ministries, and they've got a lot of the churches connected there. So it's sort of a middle starting place where you can send out the message. Also, I'm sure that they would be willing, because they do it for everybody, uh be willing to, if you have um at the food pantry, if you have uh handouts or information that you'd like to share with uh community, with people in the community who might eat that, that would be a really good place to put it. And I I'm pretty sure they wouldn't mind. In fact, they'd welcome it.
Sarah, with the village board's permission, um we can, to get this going and going, we can make available the police department now for you to have, I can find space here for you to to at least be and have people be able to come to. Um and and in the meantime, just so we can get this up and running, if you and I can meet uh like tomorrow or sometime this week to get some pamphlets and stuff, so we can get this program going again, with the permission of the village board.
Kevin, did you want to say anything? I just saw you unmuted. Um Andy, did you, uh do we need to give um official approval for something like that?
Well, I think the discussion we've had here, obviously, this is something that the police department uh will be coordinating with Unity House on with Sarah. Um I I don't think that that's required um any kind of board action. Um I mean, this is already, quite frankly, what the police department is doing in part anyway, so it's just providing more support services.
Yep.
Uh so I don't think any formal uh village board actions required at this point. I would add, though, that if you're looking for some permanent office space or location, um Chief Ash, probably a good idea to coordinate with uh the building department too, just to make sure everything is safe.
Yep.
Uh before those services are provided.
You mean, within, within the police department, Andy, or or?
No, 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 not in the police department. We know that's safe, but the the alternate office space that might be available in the village or the town.
Okay. Um and I can just point out here, and I think Bobby uh is gonna probably agree with me, on one of the uh things that the civilian review board is being established by the governor, is uh we're supposed to have outreach programs of this nature. So we think, again, you know, this is gonna be something we're gonna be ahead of the the game here, and I think this is gonna work really well for the village and the town.
Yes, I definitely agree, Bob.
Well, anyone, any other questions for Sarah?
How does this connect with, let's say, um there's a family issue, would say, uh DSS does Unity House, are there referrals? Is it confidential between them and the uh the person seeking assistance, or if if they find out that something is is wrong in a household, can they share that information with DSS or uh the uh public authorities?
Yeah, I can just speak to that a little bit. So DSS, we have a great relationship with Rensselaer County DSS. We're actually doing all of our um entitlement appointments, like food stamps, Medicaid, things like that. We can do those all remotely too, just from like a laptop, because they're kind of altering everything um as far as COVID goes right now. So and we can certainly, we help clients all the time work out their cases and everything else for DSS. The other thing, yeah, we can help families. Um and then as far as family like issues, like family violence, my staff are mandated reporters. So if there's an issue where we have to call CPS, which sometimes that happens, um we also have a great relationship with Rensselaer County CPS, and we we always tell that whoever we're calling about it, that we're calling and why we have to call, and we take them through that process, and then we help them get to a point where CPS doesn't have to be involved. So it's really like a holistic program. We really want to help with every aspect, and we have all those relationships in place with those different um governmental bodies. So, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah? Uh, outstanding. Uh, Sarah, uh, thank you for being here and I, I, I look forward to trying to help this vision of bringing you guys in a more permanent basis here in the village. Uh, but I thank Chief as well for, um, planting the seed, uh, in the board for us. I'm, I'm hoping that we can, uh, get something going here for you guys in the future.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to do this and I'm really excited to just kind of help a bunch of people who weren't getting maybe all the services they're entitled to before. So I think this is going to be really great.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Sarah, I'll give you a call. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Chief Ash.
Bye.
Okay, uh, our second presentation is actually from our great esteemed Deputy Mayor Bobby Ryan, who's going to give us an update on the civilian review board. And I forgot to email him earlier to tell him that yes, he would be talking tonight on this screen. Uh, review boards on my bed. Bobby, you're on.
Okay. Uh, well, based on the, the documents that we received, the executive order, I should say, from the state of New York, from our governor, that, uh, I can just read in, just touch base with it. It's regarding, where is it? Okay, then, okay. Where is this recent history includes another incident about incidents involving the police that then resulted in deaths of unarmed civilians, predominantly black and African-American men have undermined the public confidence and trust in our system, law enforcement, criminal justice. Such condition is ongoing, urgently needs to be rectified. So in, in layman's terms, what it tells us is that we have to adopt a civilian review board that will help review the needs of our community and buy its, our, our police force and evaluate the department's current policies and practices, so that we are in compliance with this executive order by the governor. And the directive is to be on the books and local law with, with us in the village by, by each community by April first of 2021. So based on that directive we received, Chief Ash and myself, uh, we, we did a little brainstorming and we came up with a civilian review board and we have a, a pretty good range of individuals who are helping, we're reviewing the policies and going through from, Bobby, how many pages are there in, in the whole policy and procedure documents that we're reviewing?
Well, there's like sixty-one topics that, um, are involved in the, in the, the rules and regulations. So I would say there's got to be well over almost fifteen hundred to two thousand pages.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's, it's a lot of reviewing and, you know, and there's, there's a lot of things that we've gone through and reviewing and we're trying to make sure that we establish these policies so that every, that there's no more issues of this magnitude or this volume, uh, it is certainly not in our, our police department, but we're certainly making sure that we're going through everything, uh, as far as every type of situation that a police officer can encounter. And we're going through and we're coming up with modifying the policies and procedures. And then once we're done reviewing this rough draft, we're going to involve the entire community and in discussion as well to get their input from, uh, based on a public hearing. And, and then we'll go back and we'll come to a final decision is as far as final documentation and then move forward and adopt this as our police procedures for the village of Falls. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, or if I've missed anything in, uh, I'm trying to sum it up in a nutshell.
No, I mean, we've been meeting every week for almost two hours, uh, a session and, and I'm confident I just completed the rest of the book to be passed out to the, to the members. I'm confident we'll have our, our part done by the end of December and presented to the village board for, for, uh, uh, public hearing. The only thing that I would like to be able to have permission to do is, and we'll be have it up and running tomorrow, is that we put together, um, something that we could put out on our website so that we could get some public comment. And I've been speaking to my computer guy, Officer, um, Wessels, and he has no problem getting this on our website tomorrow and have a place where private comments could be made, um, to us so that we can present it over to the civilian review board. But I was hoping that the village board and maybe even the town for that matter, puts it out on their website so that they can gather any comments. And then we can, um, that's one part of, of the order from the governor is that we're supposed to have public comment. So this is one way we can reach out to the public as well and ask them for their input.
So are you thinking about putting parts of it out as they're ready and gone through, uh, your review? Or are you thinking about, once it's done, putting it out there?
We wanted to create a couple workshop meetings between now and December, um, at the, where, where people can, um, either meet with us. We, we're obviously going to have to have a bigger spot would be either at the Armory or down at the highway garage where we would advertise that we're going to have a workshop meeting for people who may want to come in and, and speak. But I also think that if we put it out on a website, we're, we're going to draw more attention to people who may not want to come to the board for whatever reason and, um, just give their comments to, to us that way as well. This way we cover all our bases and we've reached out to the public and we're, and we're, we're definitely listening to them. So. Andy, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, Rob, if you could scroll up a little bit on the executive order on the screen, that's good. So right there is good. So if you look at the, currently on the screen, the third paragraph from the bottom, this is really the directive from the governor that says such plan. And when it says that, everything up above was the police department, in this case, it's Deputy, uh, Mayor Ryan, stakeholders in the community. This is the committee that's been set up, working on the review of the police department practices, policies and procedures. Once they have put together their proposed plan, that's what they're referencing in this paragraph. Such plan shall be offered for public comment to all citizens in the locality and after consideration of such comments, shall be presented to the local legislative body in such political subdivision. So Chief Ash, you're correct. What the governor is looking to do is to have this committee of police representatives, elected officials, stakeholders in the community, look at the practices, policies, procedures of the local police department. And once they have a plan put together to address the issues that the executive order seeks to address, then the plan needs to be offered for public comment. It doesn't identify how to do that. It doesn't necessarily need to be a formal public hearing. In my opinion, it could take different forms, uh, but you do need to offer it to the public so that they can review it and present comments to the committee. The committee needs to consider those comments, make a final plan that that then gets presented to the Board of Trustees. And the paragraph goes on then to say that the Board of Trustees shall ratify or adopt the plan by local law or resolution. Now, obviously, if it's a formal local law, that needs an additional public hearing. If it's a resolution, it's just action by the village board. And we can address that in 2021, how, how the board wants to handle it. But Chief Ash and Deputy Mayor Ryan, I think this is the right approach of going through, creating the plan, offering it to the public for comment, incorporating those comments, or at least considering those comments in the final plan that the committee wants to present to the Board of Trustees. Do I have any issue with, with seeking out comments through the website? I, I don't see any issue with it. The document needs to be available for public re- review and inspection anyway.
But that should only be, Andy, when after we're complete, is what you're, is what this is saying.
Because, yeah, that's what this is saying is, and it doesn't necessarily need to be the whole document. It can be sections, but once the committee says, this, this is the plan that we think is appropriate, let's let the public review it and give us comments. And that could result in changes to it, right? Well, that's the whole purpose of seeking public comment from it. So once, not the entire document per se, but certainly when sections, the committee thinks is in a form that's appropriate for public comment, that, that's when it would be, um, uh, provided to the public and, and, and seek public comment. However, the, the, the committee feels appropriate, that can be through formal in-person workshop sessions. It could be posting it and allowing, uh, comments to be submitted in writing or electronically. The executive order didn't direct how that needs to be done. It just says the plan needs to be offered for public comment and the committee needs to consider those comments before presenting the plan to the Board of Trustees.
Bob, Bob, did you get a chance to, to send out the, um, the memo that?
The press release?
Press release that we want to put on the website?
Yeah, I sent it, yes, I sent it to Rob and that's Rob, that's I was going to bring that up next. So. All right, is, is that press release acceptable?
When I, when I forwarded it to Andy, I missed the, uh, actual attachment. So let me forward that on to Andy with the attachment and we'll get back to you early tomorrow, all right?
That's, that, what, what Bob sent to you, to you, uh, Mayor, was what we wanted to put on the website. So it, as soon as you can get back to me would be greatly appreciated and then I can have my people get in on our website.
And we'll put it on our website as well and point it to whatever you guys have over there.
Okay.
My apologies on the, um, learning how to forward things on email thing. Andy, I just sent it to you. So we'll, we'll check it out in the morning.
Very good. I'll look at it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Anything else you want to share on this, Bobby? I know Marie is involved in that as well.
Yes, yes, there's Marie and yes, there's definitely, we, we have a, a, a good variety of individuals and we're making progress. Like Bob said, we, we get a lot done in, in the time that we spend. It's, we're meeting every Tuesday that we possibly can, starting at five o'clock. So we're getting a lot done.
Awesome. Thank you, Bobby.
Cost me a lot of doughnuts last time.
Good cookies, though.
Careful, you're giving us a lot of ins for police and donut jokes.
Yeah, uh, uh. We've got big shoulders.
All right, moving on, just a few mayor updates. Um, I want to talk frankly, um, and sincerely about COVID-19. Uh, the numbers are going up in our county. Uh, it's not in, in a particular like vile, evil way. It just happens to be going up. Um, as we approach the winter season, this is exactly what we have been expecting. Uh, there have generally been, I think, um, and this is in, also in talks generically, uh, with some members of the county, three typical ways of transmission. O- oftentimes it goes through families. Oftentimes, when, you know, when one person has it and doesn't realize it, then, you know, since everyone's living together in the house, it goes through that way. And that's common, uh, also often through healthcare workers, um, and that is common. And then I would say probably the third one is through easily avoidable situations. Now, I'm, that's not them speaking, that's, that's me speaking. But I think as the season comes forward and we're looking at other parts of the county, as the numbers go up, some of these things are preventable if we just seriously take on, uh, social distancing, mask wearing, hand washing and hand sanitizing and, uh, refraining from things that we would like to do. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm watching as a teacher, I'm watching other school districts go through a, a lot of tough times because of it. And there's, you know, there's so many frustrating things about the COVID experience. Um, but, you know, taking the partisan nature of, of thoughts on this out of it for a minute. Um, more cases means more quarantining. It has more effects on families, on schools, on communities, on healthcare workers, on all of the people who have to do contact tracing. And it's really just in our best interest to be responsible with how we handle this. It's, it's going to be with us. Um, there's some very promising, um, things coming out in terms of vaccinations, but, uh, we're still a ways away from that process working out and getting distribution. And we just have to really consider, um, a winter without a vaccine and plan for that. And, you know, the more that we do to prevent the spread, the better it's going to be. And the more times where we run the risk of spreading it, um, the worse it's going to be. And it's not just like a little bit worse, it can be an exponential worse. So that is my plea as, uh, as the mayor of the community is just to please be safe and be smart as you consider all, all the things. I know it's awful. I know it's frustrating. I'm a teacher. It's every day, it's frustrating because, uh, so many systems have been just so changed and it's so frustrating. But that is the reality that we're facing. Um, and I'm just seeing the numbers uptick in the county. Um, I'm seeing in rural places across the country where, um, we're sort of in this national third wave. And again, we're in our own sort of community here. Um, but I'm, I'm seeing a lot of the same things where hospitals are beginning to get overrun. And I know we have a lot of people in this village who work in various healthcare facilities, nursing homes, hospitals, um, so on. Um, so I just want to really emphasize, um, safety and, and, and concern and smart choices regarding COVID. Uh, next thing I just want to make people aware of, and I, I, I think I sent this out to the trustees earlier, but, um, our front door in the municipal building, um, has gotten to the point, we've known it was, uh, in rough shape. I know Kevin has brought it up a couple of different times. Uh, it got to the point where we can't ignore it anymore. It was basically blowing open with some heavy winds, which we had a bu- a bunch of. So, um, I spoke with Neil, spoke with Denise, spoke with Andy, reviewed the procurement policy with Andy, and I made the emergency, um, purchase authorization as required in our procurement policy. Um, and part of the requirement is that I should make sure the trustees are aware. I think I emailed all the trustees, but I just want to make sure everyone is aware. Um, and the company is already working and I think they're going to fix not just the door, but I think they're also going to adjust the glass around the door and the base there. So I think all of that's going to be addressed. Just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. And finally, later this meeting, we're going to be introducing local law number three. These are the rules and regulations around keeping chickens and I'll have more information later in the meeting on this. Um, and just like we did for local law number two, we will set a public hearing tonight for another time and we will be taking, I'm sure, lots and lots of, of thoughts and feedbacks and comments and questions on that. I would just urge everyone to understand a couple of principles. One, read the entire law before, uh, jumping to any conclusions. And number two, uh, we are not married to it. I would be super happy if it passed, but if we hear concerns, um, and it causes us to either scrap it or go back to the drawing board, or we hear lots of praise, lots of finally, we're more movement. Um, that is what we're here to do. We're here to serve. Um, we, we, we got some comments from, uh, Mark as, as, as the code enforcement, building department, uh, and some trustees, and we made some tweaks between last meeting and this meeting. Um, I'm excited to bring it forward. Uh, I think personally it would be a good thing, but I also want to hear about people. And I know that this is a, a longstanding, uh, thing that has been discussed. So I'm eager to facilitate that discussion and we'll, that'll be coming up next, uh, meeting. Uh, any questions, trustees, on anything I just, um, mentioned? Awesome. Okay, um, I, we do have the public hearing open on local law number two, the parking, uh, law, a law. I do want to give anyone a chance to speak on that, um, local law number two. And then, uh, if no one does, we'll close that and then we'll go back to the normal people to be heard where anyone can speak. So one last time, does anyone want to speak on local law number two, which is the municipal parking lots? If you do, please speak up now. Okay, hearing none. Uh, in that case, I am looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby. I need a second.
Second.
All right, Andy, do we need to vote on closing the public hearing?
Yes, you do. That'll formally close the public hearing.
All right, any, uh, further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye, thumbs up as well.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sounds unanimous. So the public hearing is officially closed at seven PM. Later, uh, this evening, we will, um, bring up the opportunity to, um, pass that if that is the, uh, decision of the board. Now, we're in the people to be heard section. Anyone can speak up on anything. We just ask that. You, uh, say your first name, uh, full, full name, sorry, and street address and, um.
Hey, you're speaking on it.
Go for it. Marion, I think, is that you?
Um, I'm, Harold wants to talk to you.
Harold, take it away.
Harold, yeah, Harold Stevens, six, three Wilder Avenue, uh, talking about, uh, the snow issue again. Uh, has there been any thought about putting the line to effect, saying that snow sidewalks have to be shoveled within thirty-six hours of a snowstorm?
So, Andy, we did a little bit of research and found the village ordinance. Thank you, Marie, for doing that. Andy, you want me to just read this? It's just a few paragraphs?
Yeah, you you can certainly do that. I think we're looking at the same one, Rob.
Alright, this is the village ordinance and ordinance in relation to the removal of snow and ice from sidewalks, 64, Section 1. It shall be the duty of the owners or occupants of land affronting on concrete or flagged sidewalks within the limits of the village of Music Falls to keep the same free and clear from snow and ice. Section 2, in the case of the of the default by any owner or occupant of land, as a for said in the performance of the conditions here and before set forth before the hour of ten o'clock in the forenoon, I love that, the board of trustees of said village shall cause a sidewalk or portion there to be cleared and assess the expense upon such adjoining land and Section 3, all ordinance in consistence with provisions of this act, where you by repealed. So that is what is on the books. Any thoughts on enforcement or chief thoughts on enforcement on that?
No, the changes were made that I needed to be made. That's, it sounds great.
Well, if I can jump in, first of all, kudos for the research on this because at least the reference that I have is that it was adopted May 8, 1919. And what's missing from this is any language concerning enforcement other than if the property owner fails to clear the snow and ice, then the village goes in. And it being over a hundred-year-old ordinance, if that date is correct, the current local laws, and by the way, these these generally are not done through ordinances currently, they're done through local laws under the municipal home rule law. Current local laws dealing with removing snow and ice from sidewalks are a little clearer. They're a little bit more expansive. They do provide for enforcement. They provide for recovery of village costs if the village has to incur costs. It lays out how that is to be done. It it provides for re-levee if that that payment isn't made. All this is missing from the ordinance here. One thing that the board could consider, if you do want to tighten this up and and kind of put it in more modern form is to have that prepared and presented to the board for consideration. I do, I have no information about between 1919, if in fact, this is when the ordinance was adopted, and what may have occurred in all these intervening decades on that. We, I'm not sure we have the full record. And if the board thinks this is something that the village wants to have in enforceable form, then probably an update and a proposed local law should be considered.
So I guess I want to toss it out to the board. Do you think it is worth getting this more codified and language updated from the post-World War I ordinance to 2020?
So the enforcement issue concerns me. So the, so are the police, we're gonna, we're gonna have the police be the the enforcement agency, excuse me, to drive around and look and see if people have cleaned their sidewalks off within X number of hours and then write them a ticket if they have not?
If I can jump in, Bobby, it's generally not the police department. Some local laws set it up so that the building department can deem it to be a code violation.
Okay.
And that it can be a civil penalty in village court on top of the cost to actually maintain the sidewalk.
Okay. And can I point something out?
Absolutely, please, Mark.
Um, you know, as as thinking of it, not from code enforcement, just as a taxpayer. And as a taxpayer, our part of my taxes goes towards that nice little machine that drives around cleaner and sidewalks in the village. However, they don't come clearing my sidewalk, you know, so that's just gonna be a counterpoint that comes up because I got a lot of sidewalk near my house. You know, and so I'm gonna have to look at investing something to do my sidewalk. I gotta do all of Wilder Avenue. You know, so, you know, not that I'm complaining, I'm just pointing out a fact that taxes go toward a machine that cleans some of the sidewalks, not all of them.
You heard it here, guys. Mark is going to take care of all of Wilder Avenue sidewalks. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that.
Sounds good to us.
No, but in all reality, I think Mark points out the the concerns I have with enforcementist because it does ask a lot of questions and invite a lot of controversy due to its simple lack of taking a lot of factors. But I do think it's worth flushing out a little bit further. Although it would require some conversations with Mark, would require some conversations with Neil, and obviously a lot with Andy. Trustees, any other thoughts on that?
Various, so that we've been downtown, there is.
What's up, Marion?
Thing, Rob, we have been downtown like last winter. We would see areas even downtown that that taxpayer plow removes now, but like an example for us was like we saw them go from the corner of Elm to Stewart, clear that, but then like like in front of the senior center, that area wasn't cleared. That it's a hit and miss, it seems to the areas that are cleaned in town. And what is a requirement to be able to have an area cleaned? Our biggest concern is, what brought this even up is that our seniors last year before COVID happened, had to walk in the road, like to go to the credit union and things like that because sidewalks weren't cleared. And that makes it dangerous for them.
Yeah, and I think that it's also a balancing of, you know, how many, how many employees do we have who can handle this? How much equipment do we have that we can, you know, finance within our budget? And there have been situations where we have been responsive to things like, you know, bus stops. If there's a large bus stop, we want to make sure that's, you know, clear for for students. If there's situations like you would, like you've explained, or if there's particular walking paths to a lot of businesses that are used. But it always comes down to, you know, do we have the resources and the man-hours to do it? And that's where I think this is a bigger conversation. And I think it's one I will have with Neil in the in the near future.
So what we've got to do is just make people responsible to clean up their sidewalk.
Yes.
And that's where we need the enforcement is to say, you have to clean up your sidewalk.
And that can mean businesses also being responsible to clean their sidewalk.
I think for the most part, most businesses are, but I think that we will have to reach out to businesses that are not and remind them that that it's a safety issue and then we need it to happen.
I think that's true because I know that my landlord, a small song. He pays Mike or takes money off his rent or something to make sure that Mike cleans the sidewalks in front of his two buildings. I don't, I don't know what anybody else does, but I know that that Redburn takes care of ours. So I think people do need to be responsible. I think if they got a ticket or if they got a notice once or twice, they might start doing it and then it wouldn't be a problem so much anymore.
Yeah, it's only gonna have to be enforced a couple of times to make people, whoa.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I was saying.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, Marie, for doing the digging and bringing this up and Andy for looking into this and also Mark for speaking up with your thoughts. Anything else? Harold, Marion?
Well, what what is your next move in solving this problem, I guess, is what we need to because we're thinking also safety. We'd like to walk downtown, but you, again, you can't, if half the sidewalks are cleaned out and you're ended up in the road.
I think right now I'm gonna speak further with Neil, speak more with Andy. And I think for the first couple of snowstorms, we're just gonna have to be responsive to where there's the remain safety issues well into the the day. And in the meantime, start to think of a how we
Well, can this conversation be again on the agenda for next month? So we stay on top of it?
Sure, sure. We'll add it in.
The other
Appreciate your help.
That, Rob, there's also issue of when you get downtown, Neil can only use the the automate his snow machine on certain sidewalks because of pole limitations.
Yes.
He can't do every, every, in front of, on every sidewalk on Church Street, whatever, when we do doubt, because he does primarily downtown in the main thoroughfares, like to go to, to, for people to walk to Tops. And so Main Street and the churches.
Right, so we have to have that logistical conversation on what we can actually do based on equipment size and sidewalks, stuff like that. Alright, thank you. Anyone else have anything they want to speak up or ask questions about?
Yeah. Jonah wants to ask you a couple of questions.
Okay, I'm not sure who that was, but just say your full name and street address and fire away.
Yeah, my name is Jonah theme. I don't actually live in Music Falls, but I'm interested in purchasing a property on One Mechanic Street. Hello, Mayor Allen?
I don't.
Mark, Mark Sirdam, you guys have been wonderful in helping us move forward with this acquisition of property. This morning or this afternoon, I spoke with Jeff Wilkinson, that is the property owner selling the property. And I believe Kendall is the realtor that's responsible for the sale. And I just wanted to make the board aware that there's, I'm still kind of caught in a holding pattern in terms of being able to go after the, you know, finances necessary for the acquisition. We have received, I think it was, what was it, Mark, like a hundred and eighty-two page environmental report from New York State?
It was pretty lengthy, yep.
It's pretty lengthy. And I guess what it comes down to is, what is it specifically called? A oh goodness.
It's a site characterization report.
Yeah.
Was the One Mechanic Street property was labeled as a potential superfund site that was being investigated. So, yeah, we reached out to to D E C and our contacts, Sue Edwards in Bilby, and they were able to send on the official site characterization report, which is a hundred and eighty-two glorious pages of nice light reading.
It seems like things are moving forward and we're very appreciative of that, but just kind of checking in. You know, Jeff, understandably so, it's been on the market since April of 2019. I think we put a bid in June of 2019 and we're still not able to go after financing because of this report.
So is it, is it the bank?
New York State SBA will not touch it until they have a letter, a letter that indicates that I don't think they're even looking for something that says that it's free and clear. I think that they just would like a letter of contingency saying that if they're holding the lease on this prod, on this property, and, you know, and on my behalf, that they're not gonna be held and I'm not gonna be held responsible for $400,000 worth cleanup on something that I had nothing to be part of. Talking with Dustin Kraus, who is the New York State SBA relations manager that we're working with, that that is, that's his remark. I think, Mark, I sent you some of the last emails while ago now from Dustin.
Uh, yeah, I remember something. I not, I don't remember all of it.
I can, I can read it if you'd like.
If you could forward that to me as well, Jonah.
Yeah, I don't have it here, Rob, but I certainly will. And and again, you know, we don't need to you know, do anything more than I just simply was invited by Rick to come and share with the board that we're still interested in that property. And we're just being held up because of a report. I know it takes time, but is there anything you don't got?
It would be wonderful if we could put those two state agencies together to talk to each other so that they understood each other's needs. You know, that's, I mean, we're kind of playing the go-between and
Would it be beneficial for me to pass on information to Dustin specifically to get in touch with with Sue? Would that help, you think? Or what's the best path?
I think it could help. I'm gonna reach out to Ian in the next couple of days. Andy, you're familiar with the superfund process and what are your thoughts on how to best go about this? We've been trying to, you know, work with D E C to get whatever documentation over to Jonah. But I mean, the fact that matters, everybody wants this to happen and we're stuck because of the situation. Do you have any, any wonderful nuggets of wisdom to share?
You you're not gonna like the answer. This is not an unusual situation where you've got a piece of property that may have some environmental issues associated with it. And whether it's public or private financing, if the property is gonna be used as security, that's always an issue from a lending standpoint. And anyone coming to a piece of property that's got any potential environmental issues is maybe hesitant because of the way the state and federal superfund laws are written. And these are not unusual. Remember, those laws provide for strict joint several liability without regard to fault, without regard to whether you caused the contamination. If you fall within a category and one of the categories of a liability as a responsible party is current owner.
Okay.
And it's, it's very difficult in these situations when you're dealing with properties that may have some environmental issues associated with them. So I can sympathize. And I wish there were a better way, but that that's simply the state of the law. It 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 may be good to have each state agency discuss it, that this is a potential property that could be put back into productive use and let them kind of communicate back and forth. But in general, the law, this is a difficult area for folks wanting to come and and deal with properties that may have some environmental issues. So no, I don't have a good answer, but some information for you.
Well, thank you. That was well stated. It certainly makes sense. I mean, it seems pretty much on track to what's been happening thus far. I I guess probably one of the selfish factors of me trying to push this at this point in time is that SBA 504 loans are at a historically low rate right now, under 3%. So us being able to purchase the property in the near future could be extremely financially beneficial to us.
And I'll reach out to Ian again later this week and see if we can get anything to happen on that.
That's great. Greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the next portion of meeting reports. Trustees, you have your reports on you. Is there anything that anyone wants to highlight in the treasurer's reports? I know there's been a little bit of confusion with the New York State retirement system and the police officers. I know Denise has spent a lot of time on that. We'll continue to do that. Otherwise, hearing no thoughts, questions, looking for a motion to approve the treasurer reports?
Motion. Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you, Deb. On favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Extentions? Carries. Alright, please report Chief Ash.
I have to do his report. Let me find it first because he had to go on a domestic call.
While you're finding a hundred and six calls for October against that brings us up to 1,310 calls, which is pretty close to our 2019 at the same time. There were 10 total arrests in the month of October. How am I doing so far, Bobby?
You keep her going. You're doing your fine.
Brings us up to eighty-three arrests, which is actually quite a bit fewer than the 134 we had in 2019. 141 in 2018 arrests were for traffic, animal cruelty, criminal mischief, assault, criminal obstruction of breathing and disorderly conduct. You had a note about the tra- the tractor parade and show. Do you have anything to say about that, either Bobby or Kevin?
No, everything went well and we still had a very good turnout in spite of being thrown together at the last minute. And everyone did great with masks and social distancing.
That's great to hear. That's really, really great to hear. Anything else you want to highlight, Bobby?
No, that's it.
Alright.
Just been working. Been working, just that we're working on a citizens re, civilian review board, that's all.
Right. Alright, uh looking for a motion to approve the police report.
Motion.
Thank you. I think that was Emily and Bobby seconds. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Post? Extentions carries. Great, Mark, code enforcement report.
Um, I, I issued my report. You noticed everything along the same lines. I, I was able to attend the, this. Yearly training virtually, that's yearly training, usually go to Albany. Um that, that didn't happen this year, but it was, it was nice doing it virtually. Uh I had tweaked my back a little bit, so I was sitting on a. You know, a heating pad and my recliner with the uh computer on my lap. It worked out pretty well. So um besides that, unless anybody has any questions on anything, I, I have continued to try and highlight any changes on vacant properties. There hasn't been a lot. A couple of them have come off the list. So I'll ask, answer any questions anyway, has any?
Mark, regarding fifty-nine Church Street, I know you've uh sent several letters so far and no response is the next uh course of action. Court for that individual?
Um, yes, it will be, but there's court, court has not been happening. Probably, you know, Kevin, when uh. When court opens back up again, I'll, I'll review everything. There may be some additional violations we should use because I think. You know, I've been kind of nitpicking the outside of the building, but we know. He's not taking care of the building, you know, so in general. So. I'll work with Andy and, you know, we'll have to do something and that fifty-nine is, that's the one next to the uh Chinese restaurant, right?
Yeah, the face is falling off and I, I found a piece of it on the sidewalk one day and. You can look up and you can see other pieces ready to fall down as well.
Alright, I'll take a look at that. I, I hadn't noticed that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mark? I'm getting uh frustrated that we're, we're heading the winter season and we still haven't gotten that sidewalk. Collapse issue and I'm starting to really freak out about that, so I may um. See if I can find someone to track down the, the owner who seems to have disappeared off the face of the earth. Or Department of Transportation, get them to do something on it, so.
DOT's response was, they weren't gonna do anything. You know, uh I think it's one of those deals and Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, if we wanted to pursue it. Uh goes through the court and then if he doesn't, if he continues to not respond. Um you know, I know we've talked to a local contractor who has a plan to do something with that, you know, maybe we uh pursue it and. You know, charge it against the, charge it back to the property owner.
Uh Mark, you and I can, can look at that. Uh correct, there may be some legal avenues to pursue against the property owner. One of the issues I think the mayor raised is that he seems to have disappeared and it's been difficult to try to. Get an address or contact. That's gonna be part of the issue of pursuing any uh court avenue is service issues, but there's ways to address that with the court as well. So we, we can review that.
Yeah, I tried tracking him down uh through a friend of mine that is in uh. Is a private detective and he has access to find out where people live and. Uh online records and he wasn't able to find out where he is these days.
Alright, any other questions for Mark? Hearing none, looking for motion.
I see uh Deb's lips moving, but hers, her uh microphone's turned off.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, Mark, don't kill me. There's stuff all over that post again.
Let's, yeah, I, I sent her, I sent her a later, letter. I gave her ten days. She has it to the end of this week to get it off.
Okay, cause it's really looks bad. And if she could put whatever she wants on her windows, right? So she's got peeling horrible things on her window. Nothing we could do about it, right?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of anything off the top of my head, Deb.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, looking for motion to approve the code enforcement report?
I make the motion.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Extentions carries. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Uh anything you guys want to point out or Marie want to put out in the uh clerk deputy clerk report?
Uh no, not, that's everything we've been still moving with bills and payments. Um believe it or not, we'll be getting ready to send out the December um utilities, the firsters week or so of December. And um, you know, just our, our usual office procedures. Um we did get out in the nice weather and get the gazebo decorated, so everybody take a look. Getting ready for the holidays.
That would explain all the pine needles on the floor of the courtroom. It looks like a Christmas tree. Alright, any questions for Marie? Hearing none, looking for motion to approve the clerk report.
Motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Post? Carries. Great, thank you. Uh highway report. Bobby, anything you want to announce?
Uh just uh highlight Neil, Neil's on vacation. Um so the leaf. Uh picking up machine was on, was broke down for eight days. We're back up and running and working as much as they possibly can to get caught back up. Um so they're gonna be doing that until mid, mid-November, so we have, still have two more weeks, so we have plenty of time to. Get your leaves out there and pick those up. Um he's done with all his hot patching in the, of any uh areas where they dug up sewer lines, et cetera. And they'll be doing some cold patch uh on uh some of the potholes that are left. And they installed, as you mentioned, the garbage cans that the uh, we received the money from the uh L, LDC from. So uh those are all installed and they look good. Other than that, nothing.
Now, I want to support um the work that our new employee has been doing, working on cleaning up the municipal building. As well as working with the DPW guys. That's been great.
Oh good, I didn't know if you wanted to get into that. I saw that on the report, but I didn't, yeah, so.
Complimenting him all about. Uh any questions? Hearing none, looking for a motion to approve the highway department report?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Craig. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carries. Thank you. Uh sewer reports. Anything anyone wants to highlight? It's like a standard month for the sewer guys. Um and a good amount of sludge coming in, so that was good to see. Looking for a motion to approve the sewer department report.
Motion.
Thank you. Give that one to Kevin, just because, you know, Kevin, it's great. Come on, Bobby. Alright, uh all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Post? Great, thank you. And last part, uh water reports. Anything you want to highlight, Emily?
Um, the only thing I have from Jim is that he needs to get the two more bids to fix the skid. Um piping was leaky and they've been out of internet since the windstorm.
And that's something I need to get back in with Spectrum to see where we're at. That's, that's been something that fell off the wayside for me because I was. Out of commission for a little while.
Okay, and then last, he just wants to set up a meeting with you and I to talk about well seven. So other than that, I got nothing.
Right, sounds good. Uh and, and while savin, I'm, is uh for everyone regarding um doing the, the, the cleaning. Um that we have gotten sort of the um informal um from Honeywell. Uh was Honeywell on sake of ban that they would cover the cost for capturing the water and treating the water. Um because that would be um water that is pre-filtered. Um but it would still be on us to do our standard upkeep. Um so that is what that is in regards to, keeps on the question. So any more questions? Alright, looking for motion to approve the water department reports?
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? Carries. Great, thank you. Minutes, we have two minutes up for approval. The first one is the October thirteenth regular meeting. Any questions or things you need to bring up?
No, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Vanessa. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carries and the October twenty-second special meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes as well.
Thank you, Craig. You're second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Post? Alright, both are approved officially. Thank you. Trustee committee reports. Vanessa, anything? Okay? Alright, Kevin?
Um National Grid finally put in the um new LED streetlights, which are in the Church Street, Main Street parking lot. So those were in working and uh look pretty good.
Right.
The other thing is, I'm trying to work with the state, trying to see if there's any funding for our sidewalks, the twenty-two project. Was about ten, maybe fifteen years ago and a lot of the ADA compliant uh parts of that have disintegrated. Lot, it's made out of fiberglass. It's all chipped and broken, actually causing the hazard on our sidewalks. And uh the state has some funding available for those to be done. And I've been looking into that, talking to the people in the ADA department about DOT, so hopefully have some more information on that next month.
Alright, thank you, Kevin. Deb, I know we haven't gotten you plugged in anything officially yet, so nothing? Thank you, sorry. Get you in for next meeting. Bobby, anything?
No, sir.
Emily, anything?
Um I spoke with Matt Carly from Rishwama. He was gonna um join us tonight if we were in person. But he would prefer to be in person via, than be on Zoom. So if it's alright with the board, he'd like to attend in person as soon as we have an in-person meeting.
Okay, I don't know when that will be. I would like to have in-person meetings at the highway department that we can also um. Have accessible to online, but we do not have the internet yet to do that. So each uh, each month, we're gonna kind of have to decide if we're going to continue the um. Safer but less a convenience for some, frustrating for some, or convenient for some, virtual meetings or in person. And Neil Sam?
Um nope, other than that, Rishwama's um doesn't meet again until I believe January. So that's it for me.
Alright, thank you, Emily. And I did get the Sifwick link up on the village website on the right side, so that is there now.
Thank you.
Yep, and then Craig, anything?
I have nothing, Rob.
Alright, alright, old business. Um we, I was supposed to put together a meeting on. And Marie, you're gonna have to remind me who exactly we're going to have um together, um discussing.
That was supposed to be Kevin and Emily and your, and you.
Okay, Kevin, Emily, uh we need to find a time this week to meet, to go over um. And I'd like to get Neil on, at least on the phone, um to talk about the transfer station for next year, whatever changes we need to make, so. Um I'll shoot an email, um and Marie will yell at me every day that I don't shoot an email, so that we can find a time maybe next week to start talking about that. Cause I think we are at the season where we would be selling tickets for the twenty-one, the twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Next year, um tickets, and I, I, I want to just make sure we have the system in place before we do that.
Rob, I just wanted to clarify, you're only talking about that transfer station, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
The, the, the note there is because we've taken household garbage at the transfer station. That's one of the things we have to talk about.
No, 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 I understood it just, it just when I saw household garbage. Excuse me, I didn't know if you were talking about residential, that's all I was talking, I wasn't sure you were just talking about the transfer station, that's all I wanted to say.
Just transfer stations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think maybe we should plug Chuck into a meeting as well, cause he had some ideas that he wanted to talk about as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Alright, sweet, thank you. Uh that's it, all I have for old business. Did we officially close public hearing for local law number two? We did, right? Okay, so new business. Uh would the board like to move forward with the resolution adopting local law number two?
I'll make the motion that we do.
Alright, let me, uh let me, let me uh cover it and then um. Um let me read it and then you can be the one to introduce it. Let me find the resolution here, just bear with me for one second. This one? Nope, that's the agenda. Here it is. Alright, so let me share the screen up here. Do you guys see the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So you can see all the where our statements are there regarding local law number two, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls. And regular session to the convenience followed. One, introductory local law number two of twenty twenty, the Village of Huzick Falls. Being hereby is adopted as local law number two of twenty twenty of the Village of Huzick Falls. And two, local law number two of twenty twenty of the Village of Huzick Falls shall be filed. In the office of the New York State Department of State in compliance with all applicable legal requirements. And the village took us hereby directed to cause such filing to be completed. So Kevin, did you want to be the one to offer this?
Sure, I'll make that motion. And thanks for Andy for all his work on this. Um this allows us to have control of the parking lots. If we decide that we want to put in two-hour parking, whether we want to put in snow emergency regulations, anything to that effect. Or overnight parking, whatever comes up down the road, so I think we're in a good spot for our uh village parking lots moving forward.
Hey, and thank you, Kevin, for being the impetus behind this and, and for both of you guys on the work on this. Um I need a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Give it to Deb and we need a roll call vote, please. Oh, any further discussion first?
I just want to say, as a business in New Downtown.
Great, thank you, Deb. Alright, uh Marie, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Outstanding, outstanding. Thank you guys again for your work on that. Much appreciate.
Marie, Marie, what I'll do for you to, to, and get it to you tomorrow is. Uh thi- this was labeled as introductory local law. I'll get you the clean local law. Uh has adopted local law number two. The body is the same, we're just removing the introductory. It does become the official local law number two of twenty twenty and I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, great, and that's what I'll send out to.
Right.
The state. Thanks, thanks.
And once, once we have that, Marie, can you also print a copy for the police department so that Chief Ash can share that? Uh with all the police officers, so they have the updates.
I will.
Okay, uh we have on the next on the agenda, the official introduction of local law number three of twenty twenty. A local law establishing rules and regulations for keeping up chickens in the Village of Huzick Falls. Now they bring this uh introductory law up again, not again to me for the first time here. And again, I want to thank um Andy uh for his work uh on putting this together. Um I want to thank Bobby, Vanessa, Kevin, um very much Mark as well. Um everybody's had some, some nice comments on this. You guys see the law right now? So again, this will be placed on the Village of Huzick Falls website after the meeting, so the people can start to digest this, especially because I. Expect this to be discussed quite a bit. Um and I think this will be one of the bigger headlines in the youth of press coming out of this meeting, so I think this is gonna be. uh, interesting discussion. So in the local law, I'd encourage everyone to go through it, but section two defines what a chicken coop, chicken run and keeping of chickens is and isn't. And the rules and regulations uh regarding chicken, chicken coops and chicken runs are as listed here. No more than six hens shall be allowed on each lot. No roosters. Chickens must be kept in a humane condition. Chicken feed must be stored in rodent-proof containers. Chickens shall be confined at all times to the property on which they are kept. A chicken coop is required on any lot that is keeping chickens. Chicken coops shall be located in the rear yard of the parcel to, and be located no less than twenty feet from any property line. The square footage of the rear yard must be a minimum of five hundred square feet. In the case of a rear yard where such requirement, required setback from property lines cannot be met or at minimum square footage in the rear yard cannot be met, a chicken coop may be located in a side yard at the discretion of the building departments. No chicken coop may be located in the front yard between the house and the public street under any circumstances. Um, i- is it okay if I keep highlighting a few things here, Andy and everyone?
That's, that's certainly fine. The entire law will be available for review. You can certainly highlight.
Okay. Uh, so no chickens, coops, pens, cages, fences or shelters were permitted on a lot within a hundred feet of any lake, pond, river, stream. Unless such body of water is fully contained on the same lot. Chicken coops and chicken runs must be kept in a neat and sanitary manner, must be cleaned on a regular basis so as to prevent offensive odors. Chicken coop sizes cannot exceed thirty square feet and cannot exceed six feet in height from the ground to the highest point of the coop. Chicken run cannot exceed forty-eight square feet. All chicken coops and chicken runs must be fully enclosed on all sides. Um, a coop or run may be mobile in nature. And there's some information there on how to do that. The use and consumption of such chickens and their eggs is limited to the occupants of the premises and shall not be sold. Selling chickens, eggs or breeding chickens for commercial use is strictly prohibited. The killing or slaughter of chickens is limited to killings or slaughters undertaken for private use by the occupants of premises and is prohibited outside of enclosed buildings. Uh, provisions of this section shall not apply to raising chickens on farms. Um, and then section four details uh permit requirements, uh, which I think is important and speaks to a couple of important points. In section five, enforcement, um, penalty for offenses, violation of any provision shall be an offense, a offense punishable by a fine not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I, in, in putting this together, um, from the beginning, um, meeting with, you know, the trustees I mentioned before, and Jason and Sarah and a couple others. Um, and then putting it and seeing, getting our information to Andy, Andy putting it together, getting comments from the board uh, and then getting comments from Mark at the enforcement side. It was a really great process to be a part of, and I just want to thank everyone. Um, especially Andy, because so many words were very specifically chosen um, to address circumstances um that could be seen or unforeseen. And I just appreciate uh the level of detail in this local law. So at this point, oh, Kevin, uh, and anything anybody want to share before we um set a public hearing on this?
No, um, I just scanned it over after you sent it this afternoon. But um, if someone is to apply for, would they have to apply for a permit to have uh chickens in their yard? Because how would you know if someone's uh actually putting chickens in their yard?
My understanding is they'd have to apply for a permit.
Yes, Kevin, that's right. The way this is set up is simply the keeping of chickens uh on private property. Yeah, it does require a permit from the building department. And so it always raises an enforcement issue, right? Um, if you haven't come in and obtained a permit from the building department and you, you, you see free-range chickens on a piece of property, well, Kevin's gonna go over and can hit the, or strike them. Mark will go over and do uh an investigation and see what's going on. This is set up so that there is an annual permit requirement for the keeping of chickens on property. And the only way to allow chickens on property is to be in compliance with this law. And kept in an orderly, neat fashion, and all of these provisions have to be complied with. As you know, right now in the village, there is no uh local law pertaining to the keeping of chickens. And generally, if something is not provided for, then it's prohibited. And this is an effort to try to uh propose a law that would allow the keeping of chickens in residential lots. But compliance with the proposed law would be required. And in part, that's a, a permit for the building department. It also allows the building department to have a list of those properties within the village that uh is permitted uh and allowed to, to have chickens. And then one of the changes that was made was there's not a separate building permit uh needed for a coop. This is all gonna be subsumed within the, the permit that Mark will review for the keeping of chickens on the property, so. That, that's how this is proposed.
We, we do need to address what the price for the permits going to be.
Yes, and, and right now this is set up so that the annual fee for the permit will be established by the Board of Trustees pursuant to resolution. So that in the future, that could be uh amended by resolution of the board from time to time.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, Kevin, I made you, because there's a lot of background noise. I wasn't hearing, able to hear Andy, so feel free to obviously unmute yourself and ask anything in my apologies on that.
No, but that's good to know. I think it's good for people to know what the process is right off the bat, so they don't come to, jump to conclusions.
Right.
Oh, sorry, Kev.
Oh, that's okay. The only thing I had was, and I know I was involved with the first draft of uh the chicken law that Jason set out, and uh it didn't involve uh multi-year properties. And I can see that as being a sticking point to many people.
Deb, you have a question?
Um. Oh, yes, would it be, if you take the initial permit, right? Whatever the cost that is and whatever you, plans you have to give for your, where the coop's gonna be and whatever it is. Um, if you're just gonna renew it, we have to renew it each year, is that gonna be the same cost? And the same whole process, like you're starting from scratch? Or is that just a renewal, just a different thing? In other words, is there, it's a, would it be a different form and a, maybe a lesser permit price or?
I think that would be set by the resolution, right, Andy?
Right, and what this is set up currently is once you obtain the permit, then you have the permit, and as long as you're maintaining chickens, that is your permit. The fee is simply an annual fee that is required to be paid. And Mark had, will had a list of those properties where permits have been issued, and we just keep track of the permit fee. Um, it's not a separate uh review. There may be some compliance issues that come up, and you always, you know, deal with that, with the permits that have been issued, whether there is compliance, and this has been set up for a monetary penalty to try to ensure compliance. But it's not an annual uh permit process.
Oh, so you have to reapply each time?
You don't need to reapply, but there is an annual fee to, to maintain the chickens.
Okay, cool.
If for some reason you just continue to use, then, then, then you would need to reapply for that permit, but that's, this is set up so that if, once the permit's issued and the keeping of chickens maintains, it's just an annual fee.
And I will.
So would we send them a renewal notice, Andy? Is that how, like an annual notice or? Or is we gonna leave it up to them?
You know what, uh, Bobby, that, that's a good question, and that's not spelled out in the, in the local law. And that's something that we can review, or quite frankly, that could be addressed through the Board of Trustees' resolution on how to do that.
Okay.
You know, how I, how I looked at this, Bob, and I mentioned before, was that uh I kind of look at it like the biannual inspections. I've been able to establish a list, although with COVID, it's kind of gone out the window. But, and so I have a calendar. So every two years, you know, those apartments were coming up, department houses that needed to be inspected. And then I would send out a letter as a reminder that the inspection was due. I was looking at the chicken thing as the same thing. Once I set up, once I issue that permit, I will put them on a, a calendar, a yearly calendar um, where they would come up same, same way. I would send them a letter.
That sounds great.
I would do an inspection, you know, and then I look at it that way. That's what the fee pays for. Go inspect, make sure that, you know.
It's your time, right?
They're still in.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes great sense. Yeah, that's perfect.
And I'll also note for the record that this proposed local law um, will be subject to seeker review, and we prepared a short environmental assessment form, and, and that's with the village as well. So um, it will be subject to um environmental impact review for this one, because it is in the nature of a land use regulation.
Andy, should I post that uh as well?
You do. When you post the local law, you should make the EAF available as well.
All right, will do.
All right, Rob, if I can.
Yeah.
You should write in introductory local law number three. Okay, I uh write on part one. Unfortunately, that didn't make it through. And then on page three of that form, if you could date it and sign it. Uh, and then that should be posted with the proposed introductory local law.
Marie, can you make sure I do that on Thursday? Because I know we're not in the office tomorrow.
Rob, before we leave this, I had just a couple of questions and.
Oh, please.
I can wait till next time, but I don't want to sabotage things next time, so I figured it'd be better if I asked my questions now. Um, there is a statement in there about um multifamily units. And it says shared coops and runs are allowed. Um, but it also in the law says six, six chickens maximum per lot. So if you have a multifamily unit, it, it, it implies that more than one family could have chickens, but in reality, only six are allowed for the entire apartment building.
That is.
Read it.
Yes, and that is, that was intended um based on our discussions in the group and um in review of other local laws that have it. Yes, that is intentionally done that way.
Okay, it just, I, 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 I made me question it, because if you didn't read the one section and only read the shared, you would think, oh, it's, it's okay to have more than six, um, because they're in separate sections, but I'm glad to hear that's what that is.
Yep.
Um, it, in the permitting, it says you have to notify um neighbors um when you apply. And, but there's no recourse for the neighbors. Is that, so I, I just, I, I there's no public, you know, if, if uh take six-foot fences on the zoning board, um, neighbors get notified, they have the opportunity to go before the hearing in the zoning board and complain about their neighbor. In this case, neighbors get notified, but there's really no recourse to them if they don't like it. It's just telling them your neighbor's gonna have chickens. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that was another thing that we discussed, and one of the reasons why we limited the six foot uh height is because of the six-foot fences. We didn't want to have these things going higher than the maximum height of a fence. Um, but yes, that is, that is accurate.
Okay, and then um, the, the, I'm glad to see the clause in there about um slaughtering of chickens. Um, you know, I think there's a possibility that some people might think raising chickens is great, will have free eggs. And what most people don't realize is chickens don't keep laying eggs forever. And so then all of a sudden you have pets to feed and not egg producers. And the, the law does have a thing in there about slaughter is not allowed basically outside. Um. And, and I, I just have a concern there. I mean, I, I've been around chickens being slaughtered. It's not necessarily something that you do inside, um, at least the way growing up. That's not the way we did it.
No, understood.
And it tends to be messy and, and loud and, and not a pleasant thing. And um when chickens stop laying, the, what you normally do is the next step in their life cycle. Um, I, I'm just concerned that, that Mark's gonna be getting complaints about either pet chickens roaming the village or people slaughtering chickens in their backyard.
Well, one of the reasons we, we put that in there was exactly because that would be one of the neighbor's things, was the, was the complaint of that, that shouldn't be outside for maybe the, you know, the kids or whoever in the community to see, doesn't want to see it. So if, if and when that time in the chicken lifecycle comes, it's their job to maybe get the chicken in something where they can cart it to a different location that can um take care of it, or maybe they can do.
I mean, I, I agree with the intent. I just, and I worry about the practical implications of that every year. Um, and, and, and I don't want Mark spending all this time trying to police that stuff. Okay, those were my questions. I, I, I just wanted to bring them up now.
No, good questions. Thank you.
Um, and then the last one is the permit renewal. So if somebody is had, is there a mechanism to deny the permit? Or deny the renewal? So if somebody had a vi- two violations throughout the year, but when it came time to renew, they were in compliance. Do, is there a mechanism to go back and say, well, geez, they, we've had three complaints and we found you doing this and that. Is there a mechanism to deny the renewal?
Like a three strikes and, and you're out thing?
Yeah, or one, or one strike and you're out. I mean, you know.
And I'm a baseball fan.
Right, currently the law is not set up to revoke the permit. The enforcement is through the monetary penalty. Get her, Craig, you're correct. It does say that the remedy of the monetary penalty is not the exclusive remedy. You get into issues about compliance with permits and compliance with uh uh, the conditions in the proposed local law. That could be the basis for a, a monetary penalty, meaning a citation in village court. Or if you sought to revoke the permit for non-compliance, uh, those kinds of cases can be put together, uh, but they're not handled in village court. They're handled differently. Generally, these things are set up so that compliance is achieved through citations in village court. But understand that a village court doesn't have, now, I've said this before, and I don't want to get crazy on it, but a village court does not have what's called equitable jurisdiction. They can't force uh any kind of remedy. Their jurisdiction in this arena, uh, land use code enforcement is limited to a monetary penalty. And if a municipality seeks to have some kind of equitable remedy, like enjoining someone, or in this case, revoking a permit, you've got to go to a separate court, and that's just a separate process, but it's a little bit more involved. That's why section five B says the monetary penalty in village court is, is not the exclusive remedy. It at least allows the village, if it's an egregious case, or if any case, if you think that there's a basis for it, to try to go in and, and have that uh permit revoked. But it's just a different process, okay?
Right, thank you. And then uh, last question, I promise. Um. At the start, if, if this law gets passed and invoked and put into place, then anyone having chickens in the village, whether they have them today or not, would need to go through the permit process. There's no grandfathering in of existing chickens or anything like that.
Right, and if I can address that, uh, in my opinion, there would not be, because right now there is no law allowing for the
Correct.
of chickens. In order to be grandfathered, what the law generally requires is that the use be in legal existence at the time of a law adoption or amendment. Uh, one can view this as keeping of chickens currently is not in compliance with village law, because it's not provided for. So even the families keeping chickens right now, in my opinion, would need to come into compliance with this.
Great, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, Emily.
What happens to the rooster that's somewhere on Wilder Ave? Like, it must be on like Lower Wilder. What would happen? Like, does Mark have to track him down?
I'm gonna find that rooster.
It's there somewhere.
I, I only hear it when I'm on the golf course.
I, it's, it's on Lower Wilder. It's gotta be.
I hear, I know it's there. So there's a rooster right now somewhere in the village and the.
I golfed, I golfed on Friday, and that thing was, was taunting me.
You better, you better find it, Mark.
I hear it up on the hill.
Yeah, it, it, yeah.
I think it's on Congress Street, if you really want to know.
Kevin, we need your uh PI skills. And your.
Where's Mark's badge? Mark needs his badge.
Okay, uh, so uh, at this point, I am looking for a motion to set public hearing. Now, do we need to introduce it formally, Andy?
Right, a, a member, a trustee uh needs to formally introduce the introductory local law number three. And once introduced, then you set the public hearing.
Would a trustee like to officially introduce local law number three? Would a trustee like to officially introduce local law number three?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, brief Bobby Ryan. Do we need a second, Andy as well?
No, just one, uh, trustee, uh, introduces the law.
Alright, thank you Bobby. Uh, okay, uh, in that case, we need to set a public hearing. Um, I'm thinking that we would set it for our next regular meeting, which, uh, according to the calendar would be Tuesday, December eighth. Does that work for everybody?
That works.
Yep.
Okay, and I'm thinking that, um, this meeting, uh, in December should also be virtual. It's possible that we could have a combination of in-person, behind the garage and virtual. Um, but it's all reliant on internet and I just don't think it's going to be ready by then. So virtual, okay, for December meeting as well?
Yeah, that's the only one I can attend because my daughter's pregnant and I'm going to be out, I'm probably going to be in Boston, so.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, virtual's the way to go right now, especially with P Stoles doing what they're doing.
Yeah, I know it's not the, uh, ideal for a lot of us, but. Alright, um, so we are officially, do we need, um, a motion to set public hearing for December eighth, six PM at the next regular meeting, Andy?
Correct.
Who would like to so move that?
So move.
Thank you, Emily. Kevin, do you want a second now? Great, Kevin's second. Um, all in favor to set the public hearing for next regular meeting at six PM, Tuesday, virtual meeting, is that right?
Hi.
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 Great, and an eye from the Kugel clock, bonus points for whoever's got the Kugel clock. I love it. Alright, um, next item, um, we're looking for a motion to put a legal notice in a paper for the four seats that will be up in the March twenty twenty one election. Would be the mayor and three trustee seats. Standard, um, election, uh, protocol. So we need someone to offer that motion?
The motion.
Second. Thank you, Emily. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Alright, Carrie's and Marie, I'm not sure, um, including my desk, I found the election manual for the year twenty twenty one and I put that on your desk. I figured you, yeah, I figured you already have, but just in case, okay?
Thank you.
Now you have two, one for Hall and One.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Alright, so we received a letter of presentation from a part-time officer who gave you two weeks' notice, so we just need, uh, to formally, um, accept it with a motion. I couldn't hear you Bobby, so I'll give that.
I'm sorry.
Kevin, end up second. What's that Bobby?
Do we need to have his name and do we, is it okay to mention his name or is it no?
Andy?
It is absolutely okay to mention his name. Uh, you do that when you hire and you, you can certainly do that accepting a letter.
Okay.
Okay, it is, uh, that is, uh, um, a part-time officer, Michael Burgess.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? Extensions. Carrie's, I wish him the best of luck as he moves on. And is there any other business the board members want to bring up?
Just that being said, Rob, if, if we're losing one, Chief Ash is probably going to want to appoint another one in the next month or, you know, next meeting or two.
Yep, and we, we may need to have a very quick special meeting if we get two more quotes from the water guys for the fix and that may be another thing we can do, but we'll stay tuned on that.
I'll talk to chief and see what, what his plan is, so.
Alright, that sounds good. Thank you Bobby. Uh, hearing, no other business. Oh, I'm looking, not to ignore the local law. Oh yeah, no, that is a law looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay.
Second, Bobby, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? We are officially adjourned. Thank you very much. Local law number three, the introductory local law number three will be available on the Village of Housick Falls website shortly.
Good night everyone.
You all, have a good night.
Night, all.
Good night. Happy Thanksgiving, all of you people from Eastwick.
You too Doug.
Thank you.
You too Doug.
I guess I'm still here. Bye Rob.
Bye Marie.